This conference will now be recorded.
2025. Roll call, please.
Member? Member Farala?
Present.
Member Farala?
Present.
Member DiBaptiste?
Present.
Member Sigidi?
Present.
Vice Chair Khalil?
Here.
And Chair Ferber?
Here. Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands white issue under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've added an item to the agenda here beyond the, after the Pledge of Allegiance, approval of the agenda itself. We typically in the town here on the Plains Zoning Commission don't have this many applications at one time, right? And especially of the importance of the apartment application 6855. So I'd like to open up to the members here, a discussion of pushing the 6855 North Ocean application to the April meeting to give it the time and consideration that an application of that nature would require. So open the floor for discussion on that.
Depending on what the applicant says, but I have certainly no objection. It makes sense. It's a quite detailed application and there's a lot of moving parts to it. And to give it its due time, I know where the first two applications, my understanding is they're actually delayed from previously. So, you know, to give it its due course and due time and one of the biggest applications we've had, I think, since Ocean Harbor Estates down the south end, I think it's worthy of our attention. So I would not be opposed to that.
I concur, Mr. Chairman.
I don't have an objection to it. The next meeting is scheduled for April 15th. Is it going to go forward on time?
Yes, we'll make that the number one agenda on April 15th at that time. No objections. Okay. Well, we can, we're, public comment, do we open up for public comment, Chrissy?
Yeah, you might as well because it's always helpful, I think, to hear from the applicant in terms of timing, things like that. Mr. Chair, if I could just add two things. Are we going to direct the town clerk then to limit further applications on the April agenda? Because it shows that she needs to be able to advise sort of applicants in waiting that they may be pushed to the May. It's the direction of this board to say, let's just really have our April meeting focus on this application. So then she can tell other applicants she's talking with that they'll be pushed to May. Is that the direction?
Well, I would not be opposed. I mean, it's not really fair for those people that are in the pipeline. I would not be opposed if you find that there's, you know, homes that are coming up for application that we need some additional time, another day, maybe have a special meeting towards that end, you know? I mean, or call a special meeting for this one.
For this one. That's what I'm trying to do because I know that she starts, the clerk starts getting applicants lined up based on her deadline for when they have to meet to then be set for the next meeting. So if we're going to say, we're going to push an application to the April meeting, she needs some guidance on, okay, then what do I tell other applicants that are currently in the queue?
So would we be better off putting this, you know, request suggesting a special meeting for the 6855 as opposed to, what's in the pipeline, Kelly?
Yeah. Kelly, tell us.
I've got two other properties that are coming up for the April meeting at this point. I can't remember where they are at hand, but I know that two.
You want to have a notice before we leave for a special meeting? Few days, what is a notice provision, please?
For a special meeting?
Yes. Chrissy?
I would have to look at that. I wouldn't set it earlier than at least 10 business days from today. One other issue I want to bring up is if we're going to consider continuing 6855 application, then one other thing we may want to consider doing is asking for a formal opinion from the Palm Beach County Commission on that, which we may also have sufficient time depending on if we push it for a special meeting or for the April meeting, just to make sure that there's no issues.
I support that, yes. And I support that we'd have to maybe push, you know, listen, they're on the agenda here, put them on April, maybe the, I hate to say this, but the other applicants might have to move to May. And can we get through this application in one meeting, right? So we have to understand that, right? So there's a lot of moving parts here. And, well, is there a motion to move this at least to the April, excuse me, applicant, please?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, my name is Keith Svena. I'm with Svena Work Architects for the project. So it was interesting, I saw Bruce Warwick here this morning when I walked in and I said, Bruce, I think we've been working on this project for, you know, 10 or 20 years together. And it wasn't quite that, but it's been about four.
Yep.
We, first of all, would not like to be pushed to another month. We have our owners in town. We have a bunch of consultants that are here. We have, I think, a bunch of neighbors. I think we have lawyers representing neighbors. I think we have a bunch of people in the audience that were here today to, I hope, speak in support of the project. We have, this project has been very long. I think the first meetings we had with Cory and Chrissy, I think, had to be at least two or three years ago. The cost of, you know, not that that's a variable, the cost of carrying a project like this is really substantial. We have a recommendation from staff of approval. And so we're, we'll sit here all day. I do think it's fine. We can let all the other wonderful cases go ahead of us and we'll sit here and be patient. But we don't, this is a big surprise. We do have Mr. Oyer, who is our attorney, that'll be here in a minute. I think someone just called him and I'm not an attorney, I'm an architect, but I think Mr. Oyer said they can't do that. So I wouldn't argue that. You know, maybe Chrissy, share her opinion as an attorney, I'm just an architect. But we would love to be heard today. And so we'll be as patient as we can. And I think there's, I think there's a lot of people here today.
We're just trying to be respectful to the application because we're going to, we're going to stop around 11:00, 11:30 today. And so, listen, guys, we want to make sure that we don't start and stop, right? And that's what we're saying. And listen, we've been talking about a special meeting potentially, right? So it's, we think that the importance of this application requires full focus, full presentation on your part, maybe not have it piecemeal. And we, and I certainly appreciate what you have to say as well about it, right? And we get that. We're sorry for that. We don't, we don't mean to get everyone here and do that. But these other two homes are on the agenda. We have some on our proposed seawall ordinance. We also have people here that are, have come on their own behalf to talk to us about that. So we're trying to balance it out.
Yeah, I mean, we would love to sit here and wait and we'll do everything we can between now 11:30, whatever works for your agenda, but to just have it postponed and not even start the conversation today would be, you know, a little unfortunate situation for us.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate your comments.
Mr. Chair, I would just advise that under section 6332, this board has the ability to continue any application that is on the agenda. You would have to hear it within 60 days.
Okay. So start the application and then if we want to continue, continuing, we can do that, yes.
Mr. Chairman, would you consider a cutoff time for this particular application?
Sure. I'm happy to listen to anything that the members would present.
Public comment?
Well, sure.
Hi, Stella Cope, 204 Beachway. I don't quite understand why you have to stop at 11:30. I mean, I don't attend all of these meetings, but I'm here now. These applicants have their paperwork in hand and I think the audience would like an explanation. Thank you.
We spend a lot of time and effort, as everyone should know in the town and the members of the Plains Zoning Commission, as well as the other town commission, spend a lot of time on the applications here. And we just want to give it the right time to make sure that we go through it thoroughly. And so, listen, I'm happy if we want to create a time at which, you know, what we call a hard stop, again, I think that piecemeals it, but I'm glad to listen to anything you guys want to talk about.
Mr. Chairman, I think maybe we start and then see how it goes.
Okay.
And then make a call.
Okay, we can also do that, too.
It might be not very controversial and...
Yeah.
So is the consensus okay?
Yes, consensus is we'll, we'll continue with the agenda as it stands.
Okay, one, just one thought, Mr. Chair. On the last item on today's agenda is a discussion regarding the seawall ordinance that we have been discussing. I know that we do have at least one contractor here in the audience. Perhaps we could all agree to continue that item because I don't know that it's the same type of importance as the pending applications. So just a thought, because having to sit around, you know, several hours potentially.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I concur. I do want to thank them for showing up, but I think it's probably, if we start the other application first, we're never going to get to it.
Yeah.
I agree.
Good idea. So we'll, we'll push that agenda, I think.
One happy person.
Thank you for coming in the first place.
You still on the hook?
Well, at least somebody's happy.
Yes, at least somebody's happy. Okay, well, let's start the, let's start the meeting. Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I have just a couple of quick amendments. Page five, it's like page five. Vice Chair Khalil moved to approve the correction of section 642, 64-2 Saturday. So I don't think Saturday is going to be. And then with regard to commissioner comments. Mr. DiBaptiste expressed his concern about noise. He was, expressed his concern about gas-powered landscape equipment noise. If we could just add that.
Okay.
Amendment. And I approve this amendment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we have a second?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay. So let's dig into the first quasi judicial hearing, right? This is quasi judicial hearing for 11 Osprey Drive, right? At this time, any ex parte communication shall either be disclosed by identifying the subject of the communication and the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place, or any correspondence, correspondence provided to the town clerk and made part of the public record. In addition, each member of the commission may identify the existence of any investigations or site this is he or she has conducted, or any expert opinions received, and disclose any conflict of interest on this matter. Anything here on this one?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, town clerks, we're in, anyone giving testimony on this, please?
Will anyone wishing to speak on this item, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
When you are called forward, please state your name and address clearly for the record and whether or not you have sworn in, and please speak directly into the microphone.
Thank you. Cory?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Two of our members, Cory, a normand town planner. This is a development plan review for a new single-family home at 11 Osprey Drive. The proposal is for a two-story, single-family home with four bedrooms, five baths, two-car garage, swimming pool, spa, and outdoor living area. The staff report outlines the requirements in development plan review. Also notes that the staff has completed their review of the application and there are attached conditions to the staff report, both from the town engineer and town planner. Staff recommendation is for approval, subject to planning and zoning board's review under the development plan review requirements and subject to the conditions that are attached to the memo. And we're happy to try to answer any questions.
Can we hold on just for one second? If Rosalie Maloney is in the audience, or someone with Rosalie Maloney, they could step out into the lobby and speak with Officer Roy. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Cory, so talk to us about the couple of comments you talked about, you know, section 6442, condition of approval that the pool should be a setback memo of five feet from the building.
It scales at five feet, Mr. Chairman, and the conditions that I have in the development plan review reports are relatively minor items that are, that maybe are just not to mention, but they scale at the appropriate required setback, like the pool. And just wanted to be clear that the requirement needed to be met during permit.
Okay, is that the same kind of comment on 6460 as well?
6460, yes, yes it is.
Okay, right. And your 6444 comment relative to just the fence, that seems pretty straightforward, right?
Yes, sir. It was just not entirely clear to me yet in the drawing. I just want to be clear that the requirement needed to be met, and I'm sure the applicant understands that, but just want to be sure that it's in the record.
Okay. Excuse me, any comments for Cory? Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay. We'll go on to town engineer.
Sarah Beanberg, town engineer. The plans and calculations need town code. The first item of building permit phase is just to show some more publions and just more information on the plan. The second item is actually not related to this project, was put there by accident. And then the next few items are just regular town, or building permit conditions.
So in your opinion, does it meet all the criteria that you reviewed? Okay. Any, any questions for the town engineer? Okay. Sarah, thank you very much. Zoning official Manny.
My name is zoning official, Town of Ocean Ridge. 11 Ospreys calculations and measurements do fall and do meet the zoning requirements for this project.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Manny? Okay. Applicant, please.
Thanks very much, Board. Randall Stock, 42 North Swinton Avenue, Delray Beach, Florida. Just a little bit on this project. This project we designed in, I think, '21. It was approved here in '22 and the client didn't build it. I think they sold it to, obviously sold it to somebody else. And then we, they loved the house, but they wanted to revisit a couple of things, so we did some minor tweaking. And then there were some code issues updated with Ocean Ridge, some of the requirements on some of the side elevations, but it was pretty minor, mostly fenestration. You know, it's a, it's kind of a Dutch colonial hybrid. One thing we did was, because it does, it is on a corner and has kind of two fronts, we tried to make the massing very attractive on visible corners. So, like I said, it was approved before, pretty similar architecture moving forward. Thank you.
Okay.
And I have, I have James Rhodes in my project architect, if there's any more technical questions. But we read through the comments, there's nothing other than maybe a clarification for the building department on a few dimensions, but we think it meets the code.
Okay.
Thanks.
Sounds like it meets code. Great. Public comment?
Good morning, my name is Arthur Ziff, 9 Osprey Drive, the property adjacent. I just have one comment with respect to landscaping that perhaps you would consider. On the south side of the property, they have, if you go to landscaping, we're at it here. Yes, oh, there we go. You can see that they have some very nice landscaping, starting from the west, coming east, but then it stops where the air conditioning units are. And I just don't know why they stopped it. And I like to, for consideration, that they just extend that landscaping to the fence line. I think it'll look better. It's also where one of our house, my wife's studio, was right there. She'd be looking at the air conditioning units instead of the landscaping. So other than that, I have absolutely no other objections to the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Close public comment? Board comments? We'll start with you.
I just wonder if the applicant can address the neighborhood.
Yes.
You, you want to address it?
Yeah, definitely.
Hi, my name is James Robson, 700 Northeast 61st Street, LaGuardia, Florida. I understand the neighbor's concern with the project and we can obviously address that with our landscape architect and address those concerns they may have.
Okay.
So there won't be a landscape buffer?
Yes, we can do that.
Yeah. Looks like maybe the landscape architect terminated it because of the visibility triangle kind of getting in there, but there's no problem extending that landscaping at all.
Thank you. Any other comments?
So the trees that you see on that south side were removed due to drainage, so that's not even the approved plan.
What are you saying now?
The trees that you see on that south side, they were removed on a revised plan. So those trees are not going to be there.
Those trees on this plan, then?
They're, they're not on the approved plan.
So we don't have the approved plan in front of us?
Yeah, I'm trying to understand, what do we have in front of us?
That's why I was giving us the file packet, so that's why I grabbed it. I know, I was going back and forth with the landscape architect because there's drainage there, there's a swale there, and you can't see the trees where swale is because then you're going to have water on your south property. So I don't know if he wants water or trees.
Just the neighbor or the applicant aware of this?
Well, I don't think it's a tree issue if it's, if we're talking about the AC. Yeah, I'm not sure, they went back and forth with the landscape architect, but we have no problem putting a hedge to make sure that that, that AC is buffered from the neighbor, no problem at all.
I'd just like to, Kelly, do we have the right plan in front of us? Please, that's a more concerning issue. Do we have the right plan in front of us?
Looking to see the last note, if they match.
2325, that's what I'm seeing. Is that what you guys are saying? Revised? Randy, when is the last revision? Do you know, do you have the last revision?
That should be the last revision, 23.
Is that, is that, or is that the right date?
Mine is 26.
Okay, so we don't even have the right plan. Okay.
May I?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, so that's interesting. You know, I don't, if you can go back to the plan that's up there, please. I don't want to be difficult. Like I said, we have no objections to the project at all. Our preference, however, is, I mean, I know the fence that we have on that side is open, you know, it's, so if they're going to move, if there's going to be, I don't know if there's a plan on being a fence there or not.
Well, we could move that fence forward. We have no problem with that. You see what I mean? That's, maybe move it further.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, as long as it's either, you know, do whatever you need to do. If it's not going to be, you know, trees, then the fence would be solid. I mean, they don't want to look at our backyard and we don't want to see them in their pool, would be my guess. So, you know, anything that would, would break that up, you know, the direct line of sight, obviously if there's any height there, I know on, on the other side of our house, we probably have like, you know, an eight foot or something, intro, between our house and the neighbor. So whatever can be done, sort of break that sightline would be fine. I mean, you don't need to hold off the...
Yeah, I mean, we have no problem. It's a pretty serious buffer along there, but we have no problem extending it or working with the neighbor to address that little area there. Either way, obviously it would have to be integrated with the drainage, but I don't really, just looking at it, I don't see any issue, any privacy issue. The buffer goes almost all the way up to the setback, so we should resolve that corner there.
Do we have a hard copy? We could just look at real quick.
Yeah. So could you, Sarah, could you walk us through what changes have been made or what are between the 23 and the 26?
I don't have the old one, but, so there's three little trees.
Yes.
But south, yeah, here we go. South of, so they put those trees in, those three little trees, but when you brought the old one up, it had one, two, like four big trees. So they were in the swale, which runs the water to, directs to the drainage system. So if you put big trees in the swale, it no longer acts as a swale. If they have a hedge, that's fine. I don't, I'm not a landscape architect, so I'm not really sure what the little diagonal line represents. And I don't see a fence, a proposed fence. I just see like the south property on our fence.
Well, given that there's such a discrepancy between what we have and what you're talking about, I suggest that we delay the approval of the landscape plan if that's the only plan that's, all the other plans are on there?
Yeah, all the other plans are on there, yeah.
Okay. So the one thing that's not on there correctly is the landscape plan, right? So we can't approve something that is not correct. So obviously, it's probably a good idea to delay that as opposed to approving something that we don't have. So that's my suggestion.
That's funny.
As it relates to landscape?
As it relates to landscape.
Okay. 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 Board comment? We were hearing from you. Mark, any other comments down there?
No, if the suggestion is okay with the applicant.
Yeah, we have no problem, that's how we hold the project up. So we'll have the landscape architect not only clarify that, because I'm not sure either the engineer and told him to take him out of the swale, maybe the landscape architect. I don't know. But we'll have them work not only with engineering, but with the paper to make sure they have a buffer there, because we wanted to.
I don't mean to be difficult. I just, just as background, when this plan was proposed before, I did speak to the town and I did have a conversation with the landscape architect, raised it at that point. And, you know, they said, well, we'll discuss it with the owner or whatever, but didn't think it would be a problem. So I see the plan and it's not there. So I, if there's some way that, you know, you can approve it but for the landscape project, but have the, the landscape have to either, if we can't reach agreement to come back in front of you, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Kind of what we just got a consensus on, quite rightly.
Thank you.
To look at the rest of it without that.
Ken, any other comments on your end?
You know, I think I've been on the record many times to talk about, you know, commenting on design and Mr. Stock is an extremely talented architect, without a doubt. There's two points. One, you made mention that this was brought up a couple of years ago and approved, for the most part, you said. So what were the differences? I'm curious. I'm curious.
Yeah, so as project architect, some of, the biggest difference was that your new code requires more openings on the side elevations of 15%. So we did add additional windows onto the north side, where the garage is, to kind of meet that code where we have the 15% openings on the elevation.
Okay. And in the future, if something like this comes up, I think it's a good idea if we have knowledge of the prior application and the prior approval. I think it's, Kelly and guys, it's a good idea to make mention of that and what was approved or not approved, and things of that nature. I do have to comment a little bit on the style. Looks good, but it's, you know, Mr. Stock, is there some way you can soften the front and the side there? Because if you pull up the picture, it's pretty, it's right on the corner there, right? And it seems to be a little hard on both the front and the side, in my view. Is there a way you can throw some things in there to soften that a little bit?
Well, it's a shoehorned site. There's not a lot of relief you can get in it, but we certainly could consider.
We get you to come up to the mic, hopefully. Thank you.
Yeah. You know, it's a, you know, not a giant site, so obviously, you can't get more relief in there. We actually got quite a bit, considering the size. I don't know, I don't want to really junk it up with detailing, but I mean, I guess we could consider a little bit more detail on the gables or something, but I wouldn't mess with the massing, I don't think. It's got a single-story entry with a front porch. It's very inviting from that standpoint. Good use of penetration, light bright. You know, we do have an orientation there, so we did want to bring in more light from there, because, you know, it can get a little dark. But, single-story element on the east. But, I mean, I don't totally get, I don't totally get the comment, but.
Okay, the comment is real simple. If you look at, if you look at it, especially the side view, it's just right there. I mean, this is the corner, and you have two giant walls right in front of you. And it just has a very strong appearance from the road, very strong. There's not, and if you look at, you know, what I think we tried to have in terms of massing throughout town is to have a little bit more dimension, so that you don't have those, you know, right walls right on the, in the front of the house or on the sides of the house. There's a little bit of dimension.
We kept the two-story element away from the neighbors, so I don't know, it was pretty sensitive, the way we designed it from that standpoint. That is a, I mean, that is the stairwell, and that was a client request there, actually on the corner. It's fairly clean geometry. We could consider the back, the back gable, eliminate it, but other than that, it's pretty consistent with the single-story gable on the north.
It's interesting on the, your rendering, your blow rendering, you're showing some penetration on the gables, on the one, but not on the primary rendering.
Oh, sorry, one more second.
Look at the top of the gables on the lower image. You're showing some additional detailing on those gables on the one image, but not on the other.
Yeah, you can barely see it around near the bottom, at the peak of the two elevations.
You are adding some.
Yeah, exactly. No, you're right, yeah.
Oh, sure. Well, we can certainly explore a little more embellishment on that.
Oh, they're not really going to see that, because that's your own Osprey versus Beachway. That's the side street.
Well, they changed the, they wanted Osprey address, it was a different address when we originally got it approved, but.
Do the value elevations we're seeing, does that include your landscape plan, your full landscape plan?
On this elevation, no. This is, you know, the renderings that we have here, as well as the one on the cover, is more of a representation of what the project is going to look like. When we go to the elevations, the actual drawn elevations, we do see that recesses are into the gable ends, create a little bit more dimension and depth that you're looking for on these elevations.
By the way, if the windows on Osprey or the, or Beachway or the new code, it's good that we increased the requirement for penetrations, because it still looks a lot like wall.
Mr. Chair, one thought would be, and I know this has been done by the board in the past, is if there's concerns about the landscape plan, to bring them back and ask them to do some elevations that would incorporate the landscape, so you could see actually how the whole finished product will look.
Yes, thank you. Do you have any comments to the plan itself?
No comments.
Okay. I've got, I've got, I've got.
No comments.
I've got two comments. I track Ken's feeling, and, you know, it just feels right on that corner, it's right in your face, and there, it feels like knowing Randall Stoff architects, what they're capable of, certainly finding a way to soften that corner would be appreciated. And I share his thoughts on that, right? And we've seen some other applications over the past year, where we've seen kind of big walls and big surfaces, and we've asked the applicant, please come back and give us something that's a little softer. And this is no different than that, right? And appreciate the fact that you've got a small lot and try to, on a corner, try to put this all together, Randy. So we certainly understand that, but I share Ken's feeling that it just feels very stark on that corner. My second comment is, and another, where we've been looking over the past couple of years, is, you know, you've got limited parking for a, you know, four-bedroom, you know, home, right? You've got two-car, you know, I don't know what the dimensions are exactly, but, you know, you know, kind of a, I don't want to say a smallish two-car garage, but kind of a smallish two-car garage, right? And a small driveway. So if you have, you know, and as we find, that a lot of people use a portion of their garage, or maybe all their garage, as a storage facility, that cars tend to be outside a lot, right? And so here, clearly, you could have, you know, your area, Randy, where you've got your, where, you know, your driveway per se is very small. Again, small lot, get that. And I just, I'm just trying to figure out.
It's not for that reason. The customer, the client just doesn't want a bunch of hardscaping out there, but, I mean, you certainly could add parking if you, you know, if you felt that way.
I just think it needs a little, maybe a little something more in the parking side of it as well, right? And.
You've got one spot here, don't you?
Kind of one to the, as you pull into the left, yeah.
Yeah.
If I could just make a comment, I believe we also have a sacro in the garage.
A lift, yes, yeah.
Or an additional car in the garage.
Yeah. That car is usually not used very often, the one there, yes. We get that, but I'd like you to look at that as well, if you would, please, if there's any improvements to the parking area as well.
Same now, what is that, what's the dimension between the garage and the road? I mean, is it one, I mean, the picture depicts a lot more than what is shown, your rendering.
I mean, this piece here reflects this thing here. See if that swale says A101, maybe? Yes. Can you enlarge that a little bit, please?
So that entire parking is outside the property, right?
No, it's, no, it's in the, there's three, there's three parking spaces outside the garage, right there, one, two, three. So theoretically, you've got five cars parked there. And then I have, I think we have a parking on the other side, too. I mean, guys, we have four parking spaces plus our two-car garage.
We need you to come back up to the, we just need to make sure you're all right.
I've got four parking spaces on my property, plus a two, two-car garage. I don't think I need a parking lot there.
No.
Okay.
I agree. I'm just comparing, if you look at the, it's, it's just a question of the renderings. And I'm looking at 102 and 201, that's a little deceiving. That's weird.
It's a beautiful hardscape design. We've got green ramping the whole front of the house, so that it softens the house entirely. I mean, I don't think I want to, you know, you could run a circular drive around there like it's in the neighborhood, but obviously, I don't think any of us would want that.
All right, so should we?
Make a motion?
Make a motion. And so, what did we decide? If we're asking you out to come back to the landscape design?
Revised landscape design.
In addition, I think Kristi asked if the landscape elevation would be included. Next round, is that possible?
Yes, but it's usually the opposite. We, we don't cover the whole house, then you guys will complain you're not seeing the architecture, you know? So I suppose we could have the landscape architect do an overlay that you could see, but it's a pretty serious landscape plan, but since we're dealing with him anyway, we can definitely get her, we can definitely get her to do that, but, you know, there aren't any boards that want me to cover up the architecture so I can fool you guys. You know what I mean?
In addition to softening up the hardscape.
Well, I'll have someone else make the motion.
Ken, you want to Catholic? Because you're good at that.
Okay, I'll make a motion approving the plan, other than the landscape plan, with the conditions being met that are in the comments by staff, those three comments that were made, because we're not going to deal with the landscape aspect of it until that's done, with the request that, that you come up with some softening of the wall. So that's.
Yes, I have no problem giving you guys, studying that, and giving this board some solutions on that.
That would be great. Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Okay. Next is 32 Sable Island Drive. Kristi, do we have to recite again the ex-architect communication section?
You don't have to recite it, but if there's any ex-architect communications or investigations that have been done, we just need a full disclosure.
Please. Okay.
Are there any disclosures by the board?
Fifty day.
None.
None.
Kelly, will swear on those who've given testimony?
Same people.
Well, anyone wishing to speak on this, I don't think stand, raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
When you are called forward, please state your name and address clearly for the record, and whether or not you have been sworn in, and please speak directly into the microphone.
Wonderful. Thank you, Kelly. Corey, please.
Good morning, Chair. I'm board members. Corey, a lawman town planner. This is a development planner view for 32 Sable Island Drive. The proposal is for a new two-story, single-family home, three bedrooms, four full baths, half-bath, two-car garage, swimming pool, pool deck and spa. The staff report outlines the requirements of development planner view and attaches planner view report. There are two conditions in my report. One, regarding the roof plan, which is really just to clean up a note that is a carryover from the prior code that's been revised, is not a substantive comment regarding the design. Another comment regarding the location of the generator. Although the generator complies with the setback, there is a requirement in that section of the code to provide information on why the generator setback can't be compliant with the building setback. So the two conditions are regarding the notation on the roof plan and the setback for the generator. And otherwise, the plan meets all of the town codes, recommend approval with conditions, and are happy to answer any questions.
So the generator cannot be.
The code.
Cannot be reasonably achieved, as you say here.
The code language is that the generator has to meet the setback for the principal building, but where it can't be, where that principal building setback can't be reasonably achieved, there just needs to be some justification for why it can't beat that setback. And otherwise, it can meet a setback of, I think it's ten feet, or five feet, approximately. And of course, the generator has to be fully buffered, so that it can't be seen from the neighbors or from the street. And in many cases, the generator location is, is more a function of the building configuration and meeting the development program for the architect.
Right. This is on the side of the building, next to the garage, right there, right? Is that correct? Where the generator and AC units are? Just so I get my bearings right here.
Yes, or the orient, let's see, is on the side property line by the garage.
Yes, kind of the northeast side of the property.
Yes, next to the condensing units and floor equipment.
Okay.
So the generator is located consistent with that other mechanical equipment, and it's really a matter of ensuring that we're complying with that language in the code regarding the setback of the generator being consistent with the principal building.
Right. Questions?
Comments to Corey?
No? No? Good. Ken?
No.
Mark?
With regard to the proximity to the AC units, is there, that's within towers?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Corey. Ken, engineer, Eric.
So this project, again, has a large and little, minor landscape versus engineering aspect in swales, but there is the correct plan in your packet.
Great, thank you.
And then, you'll see this on a couple of projects, there is a five-foot easement for utilities on the flat, so I've asked the applicant to go to the various utility companies and make sure that there's no utilities in that area where they're going to put trees and landscape.
Is that the easement on this kind of southern part of the property?
I think there's two. It's along the.
I see five-foot easement on the southern side.
Yeah, is this to north?
Oh, and it's also on the.
Yeah, so like south.
On the eastern side, yeah.
And the west, yeah. So anything they put in there, it needs to confirm that there's no underground or overhead or anything that's going to impact the utilities in the area.
Okay. How does everything else look from your perspective here?
Well, yeah, I mean, if you want to go to the landscape, there's just a couple of little things on that. on that. West side, they have a tree, a sable palm that's basically in the middle of the swale. And then on the south side, some of the Montgomery palms, I believe those are also in the middle of the swale.
Okay, to stay there or need to be removed?
The Montgomery palms need to be looked at. The sable, I guess that's existing.
Yep.
So, I don't know. Like I said, it's right in the middle of the swale and then the catch basin right north of it. So if the water can't get to the catch basin, it's basically going to sit on the south side of that tree.
Yes.
So it'll hurt, but in heavy rainfalls, it will go on through the just.
Well, I walk this street quite often and there is, feels like a, that there's just to the north of this proposed home, it's, it feels like the drainage doesn't work great at times under heavy rain conditions, right? So.
Yeah, so I know.
No, I know. I get it. I get it. I get it. Any questions? Anyone? Mark, Ken? No, no questions. Okay. Thank, thank you. Thank you very much. Manny? Town zoning official?
Yes, the applicant's calculations and my calculations did fall within the requirements for zoning. At this time, I do recommend approval with the conditions set, set forth by Corey.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you very much, Manny. Okay. Well, applicant?
Thank you. Randall Stott, forty-two North Swinton Avenue, Delray Beach. Just briefly on this site, I know Shields, you know the site really well. It's a dry lot, Sable Island. It is a customer that's lived on this site for quite a while. They're home and just was, had seen better days. So it's a pretty cool, interesting site. Young family. I think what we did for them to create a really nice, excuse me, backyard pool area facing south and a nice yard area on a pretty tight site, but an interesting site. Also has a little peek-a-boo from the second floor over to the water. So, you know, it's, it's more of a Bermuda colonial style home. Attractive mass, like single-story elements on each side. And, you know, fairly simple, clean floor plan, nice outdoor areas that, you know, served obviously their purpose well. I'm sure we can address the drainage issues that have been brought up by the city engineer. It looks like those trees could be slid. If so, I'm not that familiar with that situation, but I'll certainly have James work with the landscape architect to correct any issues when it comes to that, those kinds of things. Otherwise, I'll just field, Doug, any questions you may have.
Well, let's, let's, Ken, thank you very much, Randy. Great. Would you open up the public comment, please?
Good morning. I didn't see you walking this morning. Christine DeHassan, twenty-nine Sable Island. I am actually directly behind the house, one house over. First, I want to say though, thank you for your service to the town and thank you for being as thorough as you are. You guys are the gatekeeper to preserving what it looks like, not only now, but in the future. So I think it's a pretty important job and I appreciate it. I have to tell you, it is with joy that we have invited this family onto the island. We hear the son playing his recorder. Yes, 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 he has a river. And he's playing in the front yard. They have two wonderful dogs and it's just, they're a great addition and beautiful architecture. Absolutely beautiful. I'm in love with the coastal wood. I got to have it myself. So anyways, I've talked to all the neighbors and I'm not representing all the neighbors. I can only represent myself, but I have not heard any, any negative or any pushback or feedback. So we welcome the new family and we welcome the new house. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I do have a public comment. It came via email.
Please.
This came from Connor Glenn Dinning to Sable Drive, Sable Island Drive. Admittedly, I will be sad to see the cute little house currently on the lot gone. It is the oldest house on the island built in nineteen fifty-seven. With that said, the proposed design is attractive and thoughtful compared to the bland transitional design popping up left and right. I think landscaping ideally with some shade trees will really help this house blend into the island well. The earliest ads for which highlight Sable Island's foliage and large trees. The current plan doesn't really do that. The landscape plan itself proposes three Sylvester palms in the front yard while the digital rendering actually shows a single coconut palm. The Sylvester palms will be pretty visually unexciting and made worse by being planted in square beds of pebbles. I would love to see something different that helps stress up the height of the home from the street.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment and board comment.
I think it looks terrific. That's my comment.
Me?
Yes.
Is the applicant here by a chance? Are they here? They have to be. I have no, see, I think there's a difference between this design and the prior design. Great job. The last one was a good job. I mean, I'm just, you know. But, but do you see the character here? I mean, in the, in the design and the, and the massing is a little different. Good job. I mean, I have, I think it looks great. I really do. I think it's a good plan. I'm, I'm glad there's a, a happy family there. The family before that was really sweet too, but I've been here too long. Great job. I have no comments.
No comments. Looks good.
No comments.
Yeah. Listen, I, I share Ken's comments too. Really nice job, Randy, and your team here. And this is interesting. It's a, it's an interesting lot, how it sits up high like this. And I assume you're going to, I don't know if you're cutting it down or, or kind of keeping it that height because it kind of goes up and sits up there. And it's, and it's a very well-done, clever, and, and the, the family are fantastic. Got to know them well. And they're built for their family, built for the long-term here. This isn't flip or anything else. This is, this is not a spec house. This is a home. And so, yes, I'm very excited. We'll just figure out the landscaping side and the easement area, make sure that's right. I do think there's a power line. Is there a power line that goes? Is that what the easement's for, that power line back there?
Yes.
That's what I thought, right?
Yes.
Does the power line then go behind everyone's house or does, what does it do? Does it go behind your house?
I believe it does, it goes down the center.
I think it does.
Yeah, yeah. Which is kind of clever. So you're not seeing on the street the power lines.
We may not be seeing those power lines. Much further.
Yeah.
And the north to island, so.
Yes.
It might be going underground. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
With, with the conditions being met. You still second? Okay, I second the second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you. And Ken, I will address your, yours and the board issue on the other one and I'll get back to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Can we take a two-minute recess, please?
This conference will now be recorded.
Ocean Boulevard. And again, we ask if there any board members had any ex parte communications with the applicant owner or builder.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I did speak with two members of the board of the Ocean Club regarding their unity agreement. And that's it. There's, there's no conflict that I can even imagine.
I also talked with the board, with, well, several members of the Ocean Club about it, but I have no conflict with the Ocean Club.
Mr. Chairman, me as well. Spoke with three members of the board and...
The board, let's understand, that's the board of the Ocean Club. That's not, that's not the applicant, correct?
Correct.
Just, we're, we're clear.
It's just regarding the unity agreement.
We, and I did as well, so. But has anyone spoken to the applicant owner or builder here?
No.
No. I think that's a clear question. Okay.
No, I have not spoken to the applicant. But again, spoken to members of the Ocean Club.
Yeah.
And okay, just, just for the record, if, based on your conversations, do you all believe that you can still serve as impartial board members? And make your decision today based on the evidence and testimony presented?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
Yes.
Yes, and just full disclosure, I am a member of the Ocean Club.
Yes, and I am also a member of the Ocean.
And I am a member of the Ocean.
And I'm a member of the Ocean Club. And I'm not a member.
But just so we're clear, I think this is great that we're laying it all out on the table. Okay, great.
But in addition, we have been told by the town attorney, I will throw this out there, that it's, it's not a conflict of interest, mere fact that we are a member of the Ocean Club. Is that correct?
That's correct. Your membership alone doesn't conflict you out under the state rules or the county rules. Obviously, ethics are your personal decision. And so if anyone wants to recuse themselves to avoid even the appearance of a conflict of interest or some kind of ethics violation, that ultimately is up to you. We do have alternates, I believe, that are available that can serve. Should anyone decide to do that, you would have to fill out the ethics form that's required, not participate in the discussion or the vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so this review is limited to the site plan of the applicant, correct? That's the only thing before us?
It's two-part.
Well, it's, it's the major development and, and site plan. But it's sort of, it's packaged all as one application. Does that answer your question?
Of the applicant only, the, the Ocean Club is not part of the process.
Oh, I see. No, it's not.
They're not, their site is not on, involved, other than the fact that they've proposed a control unit of control. Other than that, they're, the Ocean Club is not involved in this application.
Correct.
That's correct. Okay.
Okay, Kelly, town clerk, please swear in any, those who wish to give testimony to that.
Will anyone wishing to speak on this item, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
When you are called forward, please state your name and address clearly for the record and whether or not you have been sworn in. And please speak directly into the microphone.
Thank you, Kelly. Corey, so Corey, as you've done in the past applications here, why don't you provide us a real, you know, big, big picture, you know, more details. There's a lot going on here. So we really are going to rely on our professionals heavily through this process. So, you know, please lay it out, Forrest.
Yes, sir. Chairman, Board Members Corey O'Norman, Town Planner, and I'm not a member of the Ocean Club. I, the, this is a major development and site plan review for sixty-eight eighty-five Orange Ocean Boulevard, fifteen year condominium. The staff report provides some background on the review. This is different from development plan review that you're more accustomed to. And the staff report provides, on the third page of the staff report, an outline of the requirements of a major site plan review.
Is that under board action?
Yes, it is.
Yes, okay.
And in this particular case, unlike development plan review, where there's a staff review, there's also a review by planning and zoning board. Your, your action is a recommendation to the town commission and then the final action is by the town commission. The, the staff report also provides some information on the unity of control. There is, while the Ocean Club is not part of this application, this site plan does connect with the property to the south with the Ocean Club, both from a vehicular as well as pedestrian standpoint. And the unity of control also enables relaxed setbacks on the south side so the building can be closer to the south property line. The staff report also outlines the requirements of the RHM zoning district to which this project must comply. There's a chart on page two of the staff report specifying the standard that needs to be met, the requirement in section sixty-four four and was proposed. And the site plan complies with all of those required standards in sixty-four four. The, the staff report also touches on the requirements of sixty-four fifty-two. And sixty-four fifty-two provides exceptions to the overall height limitation in the town code. And in this case, the maximum height allowed in the town code for the RHM zoning district is forty-four feet. Sixty-four fifty-two provides exceptions to both height and setback requirements. And in this case, the, the elements that would exceed the overall height that an, that an exception is being requested for, and the staff report asks for your consideration on, are the, the mechanical equipment that's on the rooftop and the elevator bulkhead. Those elements exceed the, the overall height of the building that once again is established at forty-four feet by a total of six feet at the maximum. There are, as indicated on the elevations, there are some elements that are, are less than six feet. But the, the, the maximum height on those elements that are exceeding the forty-four foot height limitation is a total maximum of six feet, which also includes the visual barrier that's included on the rooftop. The staff report also reviews the parking requirements indicating that the project does comply with parking. The, there is subterranean parking, there's a parking garage below the first living, the first floor area of the units. There is also surface parking and some of that surface parking is, is provided in a shared parking agreement or easement with the Ocean Club to the south. The staff report, as I, as I did mention before, also outlines under the board action section, the requirements of sixty-three fifty-three two for major development site plan. And once again, that is different from what you're normally accustomed to in the development plan review and provides the, the minimum requirements for that type of review. The staff report recommends approval subject to conditions. There are some very minor conditions that are included in, in my review, including subject to final lighting plan being submitted at the time of permitting and approval by Homage County Environmental Resource Management. Submitting of the final unity of control, which I believe now has been done. And of course, recording of that unity of control, subject to the town attorney's review. And once again, the condition for the, the exception to the height limitation, that, that would need to be specified in the board's recommendation. And, and let me just point out as well that the language in sixty-four fifty-two talks about the exceptions specifically and that they may be considered by application as special exception to height requirement. And that language is a little confusing because it references special exceptions, which are typically considered to be uses that are not allowable without special consideration. And a special exception use is a different kind of application. That's not what this is for. This is just a, I'm going to use air quotes, "special exception" to allow those particular elements of the building, the mechanical equipment and the elevator bulkhead to exceed the maximum forty-four foot height limitation by the six feet that's specified. the maximum forty-four foot height limitation by the six feet that's specified on the plans. That, I believe, concludes the, the conditions that I had in my report. I conclude my staff report, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions.
Do we have your questions?
Yes, Mr. Focari. The elevator bulkhead.
Yes, sir.
Six feet above the roof line, probably not visible from the street in any way. Correct.
No, sir. With the, the, the way the elevations show all of that mechanical equipment on the roof, it's behind a screen, and given the, the angle of, of view from a street level, it's set back fairly substantially from the, the edge of the roof line, and should not be visible at all from, from ground level.
Another question, you mentioned the unity of control gives, allows the developer to move the building closer to the south side. Would that same easement, if the Ocean Club decides to redo theirs, would that also give them a little bit more ability to move the building closer to the north part of their, of their property?
From a planning standpoint, I would say yes. I, I, I know that the, your town attorney would, would like to comment on that as well.
Mr. Chairman, I think if that were to happen, we'd have to look at that. We might have to make some tweaks to the unity of control, because the current draft of the unity of control really addresses the impacts of this application on the Ocean Club property. If the reverse situation was presented, we might have to go back and look at that issue.
Great. That answers my question. Thank you.
Okay. Has, has the applicant put together a elevation of the proposed permit?
I guess that is part of the, the elevations in the plans. The, the, the screen, there, there is a mechanical equipment screen that's set back from the edge of the.
Do we know what page it is next to the floor?
Kelly, you want to do that now?
Yes, sir.
There we go. There's a.
There's a building section.
Yeah, if you can. That's, yeah, that's, that's probably the best illustration. The shaded area at the top of the building, on the roof of the building, if you can see that, that is the, the screen that would prevent visual access, as it were, to the mechanical items that are shown, as well as the elevator bulkhead. Does that answer the question?
Yeah. I'd like to see a rendering.
What's the material of that? Can we get just a?
I'd like to see a rendering.
Well, that one, you can't see it from the street level.
Yeah, well, yeah.
I'm not sure if there is a.
Might see a rendering.
Showing it. You might see him from the adjoining properties, right?
Yes, from, from an adjoining property, if you were at a.
Higher elevation.
Ground floor level, I'm sure you would see the screen.
For the Ocean.
Assuming, though, that the neighboring buildings don't exceed the overall height that this building does, it wouldn't enable you to see the mechanical equipment. In other words, if you had a, maybe you've had a neighboring building that was five or six stories tall, you could see within that screened area, but at that level or below, you should not be able to see the, the mechanical equipment on the roof or the elevator bulkhead.
The extent of the mechanical equipment would be, well, you have the elevator, which isn't really the equipment that we're talking about, with air compressors for individual units, or is it a central system?
What I, what I recall, and that may be a question that's better answered by the architect, but what I recall is, is air conditioning condensing units and roof vents. And remember, I'm just a planner, so I don't, I don't know all of the, the technical building requirements. I'm just looking at it from the standpoint of ensuring that it, it meets the zoning standard for being screened.
That was my question.
Okay.
Other than the, the, the rooftop and the setback, does it meet every other, but for anything else, is there any other code or anything else that, if it was standing alone, would it meet?
Yes.
Okay. Is the screening that's on top the minimum amount necessary to screen those items?
I would say so, yes, sir.
I'll have some other questions later, but those are the ones.
At this point, so, Corey, getting back to sixty-three fifty-three two, right, the whole, or if you, if we walk us through this, you know, B one, B two, B three, B four, B five, B six, B seven, are these other criteria that the applicant has to meet as An area map that can be in scale, blah, 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 right?
Yes, those are all items that are required to be provided on the site plan.
On the site plan, and they, and they are all provided on the site plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, the, the, the traffic impact analysis is provided on the site plan, so, but it is part of the site plan.
It's in here somewhere?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It was, it was submitted.
It's in our packet? It's in our packet?
That I don't recall.
So we're mid, so that's what I'm asking. Can you, can we go through the checklist here of what's in our packet, what is not, please?
The site plan, the.
Number one, B one is?
The area map would be included. Yes, sir, which includes all the streets, existing streets, easements. The items required by section three through eleven of, of section three dash fifty-two, that's, that's referencing the, the minor site plan review requirements, which includes, and they're not listed here, but it includes such things as landscaping, property lines. It's, it's a, it's a list of all the things that you would normally find on the site plan. The traffic impact analysis, that's, that's not included on the site plan, but was included in the site plan's submittal application. Statement by the petitioner of major plan objectives, that was, that would be in the, the narrative that is attached to the staff report, which is up on your screen now, where the applicant wishes to develop a project in incremental stages, a phasing plan, there is no phasing plan in this case, it would all be constructed at one time, any other reasonable information which may be reasonably required from time to time by the town commission. I think we, we did have some back and forth with the applicant requesting some additional information. They provided all the information, and, but as a result, recommendations for approval with those minor conditions.
Okay. And you, you mentioned earlier, the, and, and the easement that's in place, which is currently in place, is that correct? Or is, is?
The, for parking.
Between the, between the Ocean Club and here, do we have that? Is there a document in place today?
If I recall correctly, there, there, there is an easement. I think they're proposing to redraw the, that is potentially a question for, for the applicant, but the original easement was a cross parking and access easement that provided a, a sketch of legal description as well, that, that overlaid the parking that existed at the time, or maybe still does exist. The, the parking will be reconfigured, so the easement is, is likely to be reconfigured slightly as well.
Have you, have we seen that, Christie? Have you seen any modification or to that easement?
I don't know that we've seen any modifications to it. I know that we looked at it initially, but again, this gone on a couple of years.
But there's, okay, so there's an easement in place. There's existing easement, and there, there, the applicant, but we haven't seen that yet.
Correct. I don't believe so.
Okay. Pretty important to the overall application, right?
Well, Mr. Chairman, it doesn't, it doesn't affect the, the compliance of, of the site plan with all the town codes. It's really related to the ability of the, the Ocean Club to the south to utilize the surface parking that, that would be built between the, the building and A one.
Great.
That begs a question, since you're on that, on the parking. Does the, since the Ocean Club is using the north side of that parking, and the applicant is using that, is there any risk of not enough parking there?
Well, that's a parking demand question. The, the parking does meet code for the number of units and the number of spaces required per unit, and all of those are provided in the garage parking.
So all of it, also, all the applicant's parking is sitting within the situs of the.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Which is the two cars per unit?
Yes, sir.
Which is our, okay.
And the larger spaces.
Yes. Yes. Okay. Corey, as you go through your plan review assessment, is there anything you'd like to talk to us about through this whole process?
Mr. Chairman, the, the revisions and the revised narratives as well as plans addressed all of the comments. There were just those few that could be addressed at, at building permitting, for instance, the site lighting, to, to be permitted by Environmental Resource Management, and finalizing the, the unity of control. So there's, there's really nothing else, at least from, from the perspective of my analysis of compliance with the town code.
Okay. Is this, you got, is this the appropriate time to talk about the unity of control, or shall we?
Well, we can talk about it, certainly.
Okay, let's go. Might as well just get into it and talk about that.
Sure. So in the town code, there is a provision that allows for unity of title. And so typically, with the unity of title, you'll take two parcels that may be under sole ownership, or two parcels that are separately owned, can do those for purposes of title so that you can treat them as one parcel for purposes of development. And typically, the most common example of that is one buys two lots, they unify them through a unity of title, and then they build house that encroaches on those lots. So typically, with two lots, you would have interior separation due to the setback requirements. That all goes away when you do a title. So when this project came up, the, the question was asked about doing sort of a unity of control so that the new construction could be situated where it is to have less of a setback between the two properties. And my initial response was, well, we do have a unity of control provision in our code. As long as the, a unity of title provision in our code, as long as unity of control was similar in aspects to that from a legal perspective, I don't see an issue with it. So they drafted a version, we went back and forth. The current version, we've agreed to, what it does is it makes the town of Ocean Ridge a party to the agreement, along with both property owners, the applicant before you and the Ocean Club, and it essentially binds the two parcels into one for purposes of this development before you. And it addresses that fact that there is a, no real delineated setback between the two north and south boundaries of these two parcels. It also addresses the cross access for parking. And so it gives the town of Ocean Ridge, specifically the town commission, the authority whether that gets amended, modified, terminated, or released. So if in the future, these two property owners decided, we want to do something different, we want to both redevelop, or one of us really wants to redevelop, and they wanted to change something in that unity of control, they would have to come to the town commission to get that approval. If anybody ever wanted it released or terminated, they would have to come to the town commission for approval. This way, the town has assurances, because essentially what we're approving, or could be approving today, would be creating a non-conformity, because you don't have the appropriate setbacks and have this, this cross access. So if the unity of control remains in place, then they are bound to it, their future assigned purchasers are also bound to it, so that the town is assured that we're not going to end up with a non-conforming property.
And having the town party to the agreement, the pluses and minuses of that are what?
Well, the pluses are really for the town, so that we are sure that this doesn't become a non-conformity issue. The minuses are actually sort of on the property owners, because now they've got to work together in the future, and the way it's set up is that, except for selling off individual condo units, neither property can be further subdivided or sold off. So it's going to exist essentially as a unified parcel, except for individual condo units, until something is changed that's approved by the town commission.
Where does it reside, in the deed?
It gets recorded.
Recorded.
Yes, so it's noticed to everybody.
Questions about that? Members? And you said you're fairly close to completing this?
It is complete. I had some minor tweaks to the last version, but the language in it complies with essentially the unity of title provision in the town's code, and so it would be presented to the town commission if, and when this goes before the town commission, for a condition of approval to be fully executed and then reported in official records.
Thank you very much. Corey, one question, another question, Corey, you just had a note here, the coastal construction line and the building within the coastal construction line, the, that might be in your packet here, is the applicant made that request?
The, there are two coastal construction lines that the town regulates, the, the one that.
Which has just been revised in our code recently, is that correct? I just wanted to understand how that, let's give me a better question, how does that lay into what, what we've done recently in our code?
If I recall correctly, and, and I haven't looked at that for a while, to be honest, but the, the, the project does comply with the coastal construction requirements for the town. I believe they do need a letter from DEP, and that would follow this approval.
Understand, is that in, in your world, or is that outside of your world?
Well, it's, it crosses my world in, in a way.
Yes.
Because I do work with, with Kelly on the letters for DEP.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments?
I do one more. When you, when you looked at the parking and the ingress and egress coming off of A one A, did you, was there any type of site analysis given?
From a standpoint of, of compliance of the town code, yes, and, and some of that was done by the town engineer as well. Certainly, the, the reconfiguration of, of the access along A one A needs to be permitted by FDOP. There were some initial comments from the town engineers, I recall, I may correct if I'm wrong, but there were some comments initially about the configuration of parking spaces within the garage, and, and those were adjusted to, to meet the concern.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not so concerned about, you've addressed the parking, so I'm not, you've answered all that. I'm talking about the site, S-I-G-H-T.
Oh.
Coming off of A one A is, people that don't know the history of that area, we've, there's been some tragedies coming in and out of, of that, of that end of it, and depending upon the elevation of the park, I assume that the elevation is going up, so is there some, was there some analysis as to that visual line? You may not have to answer it, maybe the applicant knows, and if not, it might need to be addressed.
I did, I did not do any analysis, I was ordinary. Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. Appreciate all of your help. Town planner, excuse me, town engineer.
So I looked at the plans, strange plans for, for the town code and everything, it's good. I didn't have any conditions on that. My conditions are just the normal, Boyne Beach and the health department. I know that FDOP has already been spoken to. I don't know if they have a formal permit yet, a right of way permit, but I know that we got some documents on that, I don't have them in front of me. I have to look at the drainage plan, but I don't know if the, the grades changed that much on that first. I have to look at the drainage plan, but I don't know if the grades changed that much on that first driveway area. See any questions?
Well, let's go through your, your comments, right? Preconstruction through CDA Boyne Beach, parole on the County Health Department. How was the drainage, which is, how did you, when you looked at the drainage, I assume there's a sewer treatment plant that's.
The septic tank is.
Septic, I don't know, can you talk to us about that? What, between the drainage here, it looks like certainly you have plenty of space on the east side of the property to drain, right? You don't have any space really on the south side of the property. Limited space on the north side of the property, no space on the west side of the property. How do you drain this property? How does, how does the drainage occur here?
If you could bring up the drainage plan, that's the plan. So normally, properties in Ocean Ridge use exfiltration trenches, as you guys are aware.
Yeah.
So they added exfiltration on the parking lot to the west and inlets that you'll see all along that area. They have inlets on the north side to capture that and bring it to that exfiltration on the west in the parking lot. They have exfiltration on the east side in the green area.
What are you looking at, just, can we reference the same?
She's working on getting it up.
What is your, what number are you on?
I am, I mean, my plan is number one, it's by Simmons and White. It's the engineering. Conceptual paving, drainage water, and always water treatment. Kristy, can I think if I'm wrong, but our code is for the CCCL, it's the 1979.
Correct, the CCCL is the 1979. The coastal construction setback line is the 97. The rate to.
Okay.
Yeah.
But DEP uses the 19.
I don't even, I can't look for DEP.
Okay. So I don't have all the information with it. Do you know what DEP does contact with?
I usually don't contact them until we get approval.
Okay. Alright, so this is the engineering plan and the conceptual engineering plan. If you look to the east, I guess we'll start with that.
Excuse me, excuse me, is that in our packet here?
It is not.
Okay, so we need to get a hold, we need to get to that, right? We can't, we need to, we need to see that, right?
Well, it's on the screen.
I understand, that's still not, you're still looking at the screen. I mean, we're not trying to be, we need, we should, we should be looking at this, right? But go ahead and talk to us about it, right?
Okay, so as far as drainage, if you look at the east side where the lawn, I guess, yeah, lawn is.
Yes.
There's exfiltration trench and inlets on that southeast area. On the north is where the septic drain field is. This lot is different than single-family because this has more treatment. I am not a septic engineer, so this goes to the health department and they approve it. But you can see that it's a bigger septic system than our normal single-family homes. So then if you go to the west side where the parking is, there's exfiltration on, in the parking lot area. There's inlets all the way to the north, all the way to the south, it connects that whole system. On the north side, there are.
If I get a shot of it there.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, so just looking at that on the west side, where does the water go?
To the inlet, so the squares.
Yes, I know where it goes, then where does it go?
It goes underground into the exfiltration trench. So that is perforated, so it goes into the ground.
And you've reviewed all these calculations?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So we're taking water that's flowing, I assume off the roof of this building. Where's the water flowing off the roof of the building itself?
Typically, they do connect to that system. But from this plan, I don't see that, I'm not really sure.
Okay, okay. Don't understand the question, I mean, we're trying to figure.
Yeah.
Where is the water going? Does it, is it, is it, has everything been done to make sure?
I would need to look at the plumbing, plumbing plan. I'm not really sure. Usually they show like a connection, but this is very conceptual too.
This is just, okay, okay, so.
So they either run off into the, like, the guard or connect to the.
They have an underground exfiltration system, I understand that, but just, I'm trying to, you know, and I get that. Where's the water go on the, on the south side of the property? The tight border between here and the Ocean Club, which could be a proposed, you know, building right next to it. Where's that water go?
Right, so there are inlets, which is the, you know, the squares on the far east side and the far west side of the property. So typically, there would be grading to show that it's going to either of those inlets. This again is conceptual.
When do we see the real, if this is conceptual, when do we see the real?
During building permit phase. But there is that retaining wall there, so they are making some.
That's a retaining wall on the north side that I see, yeah.
Well, and they have one on the south side too.
I can't even really see that either.
Well, she needs to move down a little bit. So you see that proposed retaining wall that's just south of the access road? So it's separating them two, the two properties?
Yeah. It looks like it's on the south side of the property line.
If you go further down, you can see the calculation of the trench.
Yeah.
So it's taking the water for the whole site.
Yeah, it's meeting our, our code for then. This doesn't, you know, like, this is one inch over the site. So even like our regular single-family, it's going to hold that one inch and then it will discharge to the road or in this point, it would be discharged into the lawn and then it would percolate over.
Well, I'd love to see the plan at one point. You know, have the physical plan to look at. Members, any comments further here for you guys?
Yeah, I'd just like to understand a little better. If you could show this drawing, the north side versus the south. So you've got a proposed drip irrigation drain fill zone. Can you kind of just discuss that?
So like I said, I'm not a septic engineer, but yeah, so that is the drain field area. So you see that on our normal single-family properties, it's definitely bigger because there's more demand. But if you go to the west of that, you can see all of the treatment tanks, which we only see one. So this has multiple treatment tanks. And then it goes to that drain field, the regular, the same way that would in our single-family. This is just much bigger.
Looking at the elevations again, is the finished floor elevation here 15.6, right? Correct?
Yes.
Yes, what is the finished, finished floor elevation of the building to the north? Do you have any idea?
I don't unless it's on the survey. Can you zoom in a little more? Yeah.
1444. So is this site higher than the site to the north?
I mean, the elevation is, yeah, the finished floor.
The, so is that, is that, we just believe the overall site is as well?
It doesn't look like, well, they do have a wall, so. Like I said, this is preliminary, they don't have a whole lot of grades. But, so the wall on the east half of the site to the north, that would be there to protect that grade change, right? So, but if you look at the west side from that, like, it's like the middle of the property to the west side, they don't have a wall, so they're going to be meeting those grades.
Okay.
That's helpful. And the parking area there, this, like I said, this is conceptual, but they'll be meeting those grades because there's no walls on that side either. They'll be tying to, and obviously on the south, it's going to be connecting to that parking lot, so they'll be meeting those grades.
Kristy, without having the plan in front of us and even a preliminary plan and then being, I guess, I understand that the final plan gets produced as a time of the billing permit. What is our role here then?
Well, I think from what Corey sort of laid out is you're approving this as a major development, so it's a site plan review, so it's, it's different than your standard development plan review that you're required to do for a single-family home and in the case of duplex too. So it's not sitting as an architectural review or essentially you're making a recommendation to the town commission whether the proposed plan as a major development site plan satisfies all of the town's criteria.
Because we usually get into drainage, we, the houses we spoke to earlier, we understand the drainage here. We don't understand that, we don't, we don't see the plan, we don't understand the drainage. So, I mean, I understand it based on the testimony that's been provided, thank you very much, but we really don't have our hands around that and I don't know how deep we're supposed to get into that. That's why I question to you.
Yeah, and I don't know that our code gets into any specific requirements as to the amount of detail that's required for a drainage plan. And I'm assuming perhaps the applicant can also address some questions about drainage that you may have.
Right, we'll certainly love to see the plan, right? Start with that, right? So wasn't even in the, it wasn't even in the package. Okay. Any other questions, comments?
So we'll get a second look at this when they come for the actual building plans.
No, because at, right at this time.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
It's just site plan approvals. So all you're doing is really making sure that this major development satisfies all the criteria of the town's code to then make a recommendation to town commission.
But the multifamily, when they actually come for building permit, it'll come back through the park committee, not?
No, it goes straight to our building official who then uses it based on the building, the requirements of our code for building in the fourth building code.
So there's no architectural review on this? We are not to, not to critique the plan that's proposed, only look at the site.
You can certainly always request some revisions if you want. It's up to the applicant whether or not they want to adhere to any requests.
Okay, okay, you got that.
Fair enough, okay. I do have a question, maybe back to Corey. So on the south side of the site plan, there's a 10-foot road access. So that's showing not all of it on the applicant's site. So how can we approve it without having another application? Are we approving that at all? It's showing it, I don't believe it's there, maybe it is currently, but to my knowledge, it's not there. So how can we approve something of that?
I think in this particular case, it's an access road that would serve potentially both the proposed condominium project and the Ocean Club at the south. So you could approve it as part of the site plan for the Ocean Club condominium. Forgive me, I think that's the name of 6855. I think you could approve it as part of the site plan that you're reviewing today and it is allowable by way of the unity of control.
So would that have to be a condition of approval? Because the property to the south has not come before to make any requests like that.
I would say from a planning standpoint, I don't think so. I don't know if there's a legal question there or not.
Probably is.
That's why Kristy's listening. Just want to make sure we get it.
Right, and I agree with Corey's assessment. Under the unity of control, we do have the agreement by both property owners that the ability to treat this as one unified parcel for purposes of development. For purposes of building permits, they will probably, I would imagine, the building official will need the property owners to sign off on the application to the extent that there is actually any kind of construction that occurs on the other parcel.
As a condition?
As a condition.
Yeah, totally understand.
But that's within the building official purview? But I would assume if they're going to build a road that's going to cross boundaries, that they'll need an application that's signed up by the owners.
So we will be approving the fact that there, that there will be an access road there?
If you, you'll be approving the site plan and then the site plan would be the approval for them to go seek building permits consistent with their site plan.
Okay.
So then that will be the building official's determination as to who would have to sign off.
Okay, so it is conditional. Going back to then, just on the question on the A1A side, I think Tara said there's no wall there, there's, what's the buffer between A1A and and the parking lot? The plan is showing what appears, this is a five-foot road buffer.
Yes, sir, that is the code requirement, the landscape provision of the town's code to have a five-foot bumper between vehicular use areas, I think is the term that's used, and adjacent progressway.
Okay, so you have down there an existing retaining wall to be modified. What's it modified to?
That I don't really answer to.
Also appears to be showing a sidewalk, which doesn't exist, but. I'm going to have some more questions on that, so.
Okay.
As a hint to the applicant.
Do we have any other questions for county engineer at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I do want to clarify, because I just, I just wanted to double check on, you know, the purview of your review today. As Corey mentioned, this, since this is a major development, we're looking at approval of the site plan. And Corey and I discussed this, it's probably been over a year ago, that with the high-density zoning district, that their development is also reviewed under the Plan Residential Development standards. And within that, those standards, there's some general design criteria that are also required that allows you to look at the suitability of residential environment, certain conditions that I could ask perhaps the clerk to put up so you could actually see those as well. It's not the same as an architectural review that you're used to doing, but it is something that you want to make sure that they satisfy as well.
Okay.
So has that, that begs the question, has staff analyzed that aspect of it and come back with an opinion?
I believe these have been addressed with their site plan, but I wanted to draw them to your attention to look at because I do think it's within your purview to consider these things because they're not straightforward necessarily, objective standards.
Prior to approving the site plan, that doesn't, that is not after the design, it does not come back before again.
Yeah, for your consideration. Now. Yeah, for your consideration, now. Kelly, that's in, let me see, it's section... It's under Article 2 of Chapter 64, 64 dash 24, which is the development standards. And I believe going down to subparagraph, General Design Criteria G. Those are the, the general design criteria. So if you may want to just take a look in a second to look at those.
So we need to examine this in light of subsection G, 1 and 2. In itself, it'll require us to look at this. Can we look at 2, please, as well?
That was the other question. We don't usually get into trash collection, but now we see we're part of that.
This begs a lot of questions.
Yeah.
Well, unfortunately, since we usually deal with the development plan review that's more focused on the single-family homes and architecture, this board doesn't have a lot of opportunity to look at the bigger site plans that most cities, you know, that deals more, a lot more commercial development is what they're looking at, and these are the things that their planning zoning force typically look at for development. So I wanted to bring these to your attention, because we're usually focused on the single-family homes, and so this is a little bit of a different animal, and these are the things within your purview to make sure that the site plan that you're recommending to the town commission satisfies or doesn't satisfy the criteria.
Okay. Kelly, can you print this out for us, this whole section, if you wouldn't mind? And why don't we just go forward, as we are continuing here, maybe listen to the zoning official, give us his overview, please.
My zoning review of the supplemental here, and discussion with Corey, I concur with Corey's assessment, then report to the committee.
And your, is your... Manny, is your report here too?
Well, basically, I would do the calculations and measurements and so forth, but there is nothing required here, since this is, there is no bar or lot coverage as far as that I'm supposed to submit. There's a calculation sheet that I submit that has the floor area and all that sort of stuff, and it's not applicable here. I mean, there's a minimum per, there's a minimum scrap footage per unit and that sort of stuff, as far as numbers, no.
And Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, usually what you'll see in the development plan review packets is that data calculation sheet that shows what the applicant is proposing, and then Manny's calculation on how close they are to the requirements, and that's what he's referring to, that there's not that same calculation sheet in the application for a major development plan and site plan review. So that's why we don't have that in the package.
The second page of our...
Thank you, Manny.
Does show at least some of that as to required versus proposed.
Page 3.
Page 74, 124, page 2 of this document. And they're, they seem to be all within or less than what max is.
And I assume that's addressed at the commissioner level as well, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I thought, yeah. Any questions? More viewers, okay. Let's go to the applicant, please.
Good afternoon, still morning, all right, we've got a little bit of time left. So Corey did a great job.
Welcome.
Thank you, Corey did a great job, went through a lot of details there. Hopefully this presentation that I'm going to give will make it a little more visual. And we have a team of professionals here, we have a civil engineer.
Can you give your...
Sorry, I'm Brian Doherty with Insight Studio, the land planner of this process and the application on behalf of Kim, Kim is with Edwards Companies, Pete's been at the architect, Harvey lawyer with Hudson Bowen, Zach Keppler with my office, and we also have Greg Bowlen, the Simmons and White and civil engineers. So we have the full team of professionals here to answer any questions you guys may have. Is there a clicker here?
He's talking about.
She is.
So for orientation purposes, there's an aerial map there on the screen for you. We're at 2.425 acres of land. On the north is the Ocean House, south is the Ocean Club condo that we've been talking about. On the west side of the road there is also the Ocean Club's marina facility and their tax courts. And I'm not a member of the Ocean Club. There is an excerpt from the town's zoning map, just showing that we're in the high-density multifamily residential zoning designation, which allows 10 units per acre. Give us a slide, please. Just a little bit of history on the site, so previously 22 units were developed on this site. We're going down to 15, reducing density, reducing traffic volume counts, reducing the number of users in and out of the site on a daily basis, so significant reduction in the number of units. And we are here today to request major site plan approval to allow 15 empty in the units, as I mentioned. If you do the math on the property there, it's 2.4 acres, so we could be requesting 24 units. We're nine units under what the maximum density on the site is, so I'd be responsible about how dense we're trying to make this site, make a new code and follow the downtown regulations. Here is a graphical representation of the site plan, just for orientation purposes, kind of give you a layout of the site and the building, building consists central in the site, a little push to the west, because obviously we have some DEP recommendations. We can elaborate a little more on that, we have a coastal engineer involved, DEP has been contacted. Typically, DEP does not act on development applications until after a local board, like yourselves, has already made a recommendation or an approval, so we'll pursue that approval after, after this process. Sorry, go back. Parking on the surface, on the west side there, the pool on the east side, a small, modest pool. Being very respectful of the neighbors' views from the north, what they're going to see looking out there is a restricted view, we had to make sure that the building is not conflicted with. Large open lawn space on the east side, maximizing views for the new residents. And then the west side of the surface parking, as I mentioned. The access to the garage is on the northwest corner of the building there. And then there's another slide to talk about parking, so I'll jump out into that in a second. Here is the site plan that is before you for approval, just showing that it is joined through the unit of control with the Ocean Club property to the south. I wanted to talk a little bit about access, so these are some of the conversations that have been had with the condo facility to the north, looking at providing access for them. So our property owner is designating a four-foot easement that will allow an access path from the northern property down to the club. And then out front, there's also pedestrian connections, so the pedestrian connections are shown in blue. There's also a proposed sidewalk along North Ocean Boulevard, and then there's pedestrian access along the front edge of our building. Vehicular access also connects north-south between the Ocean Club property and our property, and then out, obviously, to Ocean Boulevard there. And that's historically been that way, so we have preserved that. If you click to the next slide, I can speak a little more about it. So the easement that you guys were talking about, there is a shared access and parking agreement in place. We are honoring that easement and maintaining it in the same location, actually. So that easement is not being modified, it's highlighted there in yellow. So what that allows is 13 parking spaces, there was an original agreement in place that allowed the Ocean Club to use those parking spaces, or it allowed the condo owners to use those spaces. That agreement stays in place and does not change. The access falls within that easement as well, so that stays. We have 30 parking spaces in the garage and 16 parking spaces on the surface, so we have 46 required. Here's the front elevation of the building. The landscaping depicted here is accurate, so we worked back and forth with the rendering company to make sure that that's an accurate reflection. So date palms along the side of the building to scale the building, and then as you come out front, you have some canopy trees that'll help us off in the parking lot. There's a five-foot right-of-way bumper, as Corey mentioned, so there's a hedge there, and then we have some coconut palms, it's a more tropical species along the periphery. And then the exterior of the building, primarily, you know, open views, keeping the views of the ocean, obviously. Some landscaping on the north and south sides, but primarily pretty open, open lawn. As Corey mentioned, staff has reviewed this for all of the applicable criteria from the code. They are recommending approval, and I do want to point out that exception that Corey mentioned for the height. It's confusing, we work back and forth with Corey and with Chrissy in trying to make sure we're fully understood, it's not a special exception in the fact that we're coming, requesting, and we are just utilizing a code section that allows an increased height to screen mechanically. I think that concludes my presentation, we would open it up to questions. Again, there's a full team of professionals here that can answer any questions.
Well, let's, our process is, we'll open up to public comment first, but is there any other of your team that would like to talk about the application?
Good morning, Brett Bowlen, 2581 Metro Center Boulevard West. We prepared the conceptual engineering plan, I apologize, I'm not sure why you made it into your package, but I think you did a good job of describing drainage, it's pretty straightforward. It's a system of interconnected exfiltration trenches. We've got superb soils here, obviously, dune sand, so we capture that water, treat it, and then any excess gets enclosed to the DOT right-of-way, and that will be subject to a comment from them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, you were with what company?
Simmons.
Any other comments from the applicant? Okay, great. Public comment, we'll open up to public comment.
Good morning, I'm Alan Weaver, 5837 North Ocean Boulevard, Ocean Ridge. I am the current president of the Ocean Club of Florida, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the club in support of the condominium application. The two contiguous properties have a 60-year history, separate ownership and common usage that benefits the entire Ocean Club community. I will cite several examples that we believe make these two properties unique in Ocean Ridge. The Ocean Club has historically accessed the rear roof's property over an open space on the developer's property on the north side, which going forward will contain the condo building. That critical access for us will be provided going forward by a new access road, which we discussed a little before, voted that before, on the developer's southern board and on our northern board, under a reciprocal agreement. Developer owns the parking lot, and we've mentioned that, on the west of the property, it's historically been shared with the Ocean Club under easement, with joint use of a single curb cut. Going forward, under an amendment to easement, the parking lot will be mostly for the benefit of the Ocean Club with continued use of a single curb cut. Historically, Ocean House North co-op owners have accessed the club over a path across the property, they always pointed that out on its graphic, a new path will be provided going forward. And then there's an access road to the beach, which was also on the graphic, where the Ocean House North and the condo owners cannot access the beach, that's on the Ocean Club property. So those are some historical examples of the cooperation between the two properties. Going forward, the new development with unified parcels provides an opportunity to expand cooperation between the two property owners in the form of a new fitness facility for use by the Ocean Club members and condo owners, and badly needed office space for Ocean Ridge management, the property manager for the cooperatives that surround the club. So in summary, the application recognizes the long history of these two properties being separately owned, yet sharing common operating aspects as part of the Ocean Club community, and we welcome this new building and neighbor, and we respectfully ask for the planning and zoning support of the application. I'd also note, given that we're running out of time, we have several members of the Ocean Club co-ops that surround the property that are here to express their support. We'll ask them not to take up time, so that you can continue to consider the application.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name's Alan Sicklin, I'm a lawyer in West Palm Beach, and I represent Ocean House North.
Your address, please.
Pardon me?
Address, please.
Oh, yes, 515 North Flagler Drive, West Palm Beach.
Okay. Representing, again, who, please?
Ocean House North.
Okay.
They're the most impacted residential community to the north, and we've been dealing with the developer and the developer's professionals for nearly two years now, and we have reached an agreement with them on certain key issues. I'm told that town staff doesn't necessarily want these to be conditions of approval for some reason, so I'm just going to go over them briefly, so they're on the record, and then Mr. Lawyer can confirm that that is the agreement. The generator for the project is going to be on the Ocean Club side of the project, not on the Ocean House side of the project. The easement, which has been discussed and shown on the site plan, is a four-foot walkway. One already exists from Ocean House North to the club, and this will replace it. The agreement is that it won't, there will be no lag in access. The one that's in place now will remain until a new one is constructed. It will also include low-level lighting for protection, and the agreement we have talks about the, how it's going to be constructed. It's going to have a boardwalk like a field, and of course, subject to approvals by all regulatory agents. The wastewater treatment facility that appears on the Edwards site, we have provisions that it's going to be buffered to protect visually Ocean House North with concrete block wall, partially open trellis, double row of landscaping, and a good faith effort to enhance the appearance. The other thing, just so you know, is that the agreement that we have will transfer to any subsequent developers' owners, including condominium associations. So based on our agreement, we are in support of the project. I, we do want to say, however, on behalf of Ocean House North, is that we appreciate your careful review. We're, of course, relying on the talent to review the project, to make sure it meets the criteria, but we are in support, subject to the agreement we have. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further public comment?
Good morning again. Christine DeHaas at 29 Sable Island Drive. Actually, I'm going to put on my order coalition hat this morning. Kelly, can you pull up the, please? I found a 1963 map, which is kind of cool. It has, it shows the site. And, four years ago, so I can concur, this has been going on a very long time, four years ago, when I was then sitting there, I sat in on a staff meeting before the property was even purchased. And we went over a lot of stuff, mainly, you know, the basics of our code, height, density, setbacks. And I think they've been very creative in what they've been able to propose to handle some of the situations that were not on first blush in concurrency with our code. It's exciting. We haven't had a big project like this in a very long time. It is definitely going to be an improvement, not only to the area, but also to the club. I wish I hadn't given up my membership now, but the only thing that I would like to say as a cautionary measure, because this doesn't come along very often, whatever you do is going to set a precedent. And, just be conscientious of that, because there's always the law of unintended consequences. Their unity of title or their unity of control, they both have to play very nicely in the sandbox, which isn't out of our business. But the one issue that I am probably most concerned about is this additional six feet on top of a 44-foot building that's already elevated. So, I think the visual of that and the impacting of that is something to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. What year was the photo, again?
63.
Good year.
For some.
Some, yes. Do we have any other comments?
I have another comment.
Please.
It's also from Connor Glending to Sable Island Drive. The new development next to the Ocean Club seems entirely out of keeping the apartment buildings next door, which are more concealed from the road. The concealment makes them feel more like residences, which they are, and less like a flashy hotel, which the current design evokes. Once again, I wish people weren't inclined to build quite so large, but I understand that they are allowed to. I just think the aesthetic oppression of such a large structure should be minimized when neighboring buildings are either more concealed or much smaller.
Any further public comment? Okay, we'll close it to a public comment. We'll have some comments within our board here.
I want to go back to the screen parapet on the roof, and I would like to see a rendering of the material to make sure, get an idea of what the racks might be for the condensers and how high they come up off the elevation of the rooftop. And then also, is there, I don't know who can answer this, perhaps, so, is there a look, a bird's eye view of the location of the parapet in these plans? Could you point me to that?
So, I, Key Spina, Spina work, Dr. Ted of the project, 285 Bama Boulevard, West Palm Beach. And so, a couple things. You know, we, the code, you know, Corey and the whole town staff did an amazing job trying to deal with the first of a new project of the scale. We worked through so many of these issues, trying to understand how to interpret a code that would describe how to adjust the design of a project like this. So, I appreciate that. With regards to your specific questions, there's a roof plan in the package. We are going to, just I'm going to ask about mechanical systems. Some of the buildings in Ocean Ridge have just air conditioning, condensing, just sitting on the roof. We didn't think that was the intent of the code, so we do what we've been doing in these buildings, we designed a screen wall, a screen vent. We do have DX split air conditioning, like you'd have in a single-family residence. We'd love to have a more sophisticated system, but they're all bigger. A DX split system for units of this size and the number, size of the air conditioning units will all be below the six feet. We did that very intentionally, and then we located everything, so there's a roof plan. We located everything, including the elevator rides and the condenser units and any type of exhaust through the roof within the six-foot screen wall. We have shown it in the elevations as a louvered, you know, aluminum grid. You cannot see it from the place at back, go a couple more down, there'll be a roof plan. There you go. So there's the screen wall, the black line. And we intentionally pulled it way in so it didn't, can't be seen. If somebody thought it should be stuck out instead of aluminum, we could sure consider that, but it's intended to be low and to hide all equipment.
And how high will the equipment end up?
The equipment will be below six feet, I'm guessing that, you know, there's a rack, it's 18 or 20 inches, and equipment's, you know, less than four feet. And we're confident, we worked with a mechanical engineer to size the units, small units. You know, the bigger units here are three bedrooms, and we assume they're going to have at least a couple zones, so.
Well, all this community has required screening in more recent years. The units end up being larger than the screen.
Yeah.
And so, it kind of against the point of having the screen.
We, we're confident that all of our mechanical units can be lower than the screen wall. And someone, somebody asked the question, you know, can we lower the screen wall if the units are all only five feet tall? Sure, we can. We don't want the screen wall to be totally beneath the ceiling.
And, so you said it could be of two different materials. One would probably be ventilated, right?
Yeah. The other would be solid. It doesn't need to be ventilated. We think that sometimes that's a little bit better for airflow, but it doesn't have to be. It's open above.
Okay. And, can we get a look at that somehow?
Sure, we can do an aerial perspective of it and show.
Would I just see the?
Yeah, you just can't see it. We take, and we do the rendering, so we try to do it from a real vantage point, that how you'd actually see the building. You can't see the screen wall unless you're, you know, way down A1A, but we can do that, sure.
Way down A1A includes, is included in the sight line.
Yeah.
So if we could do that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Go on, Ken, you have?
Mr., just dot on me. Mr. Sicklin raised some conditions that are not reflected on the plan.
They are reflected.
They are reflected already, so all those conditions are, what you just mentioned, are on the plan.
Yes, the generator is on the south side of the building, within the building.
And the wall.
The wall on the, around the sewage treatment plant on the north side is there. There's two rows of landscaping. We have a Confederate Jasmine and a Lucia Hedge. We have access along the, you know, the ocean side of the property for those residents to come through the property. So, they're all, we agree with them, and they're all shown in the plans.
Can I clarify?
Sure.
Good morning. For the record, Harvey Order of Hudson Bowen, 525 Okeechobee Boulevard, West Palm Beach. I'm not a club member, but I grew up going to the club. So, just so there's clarity, everything that you're asking about, Mr. Khalil, is reflected on the site plan. What Mr. Sicklin, who represents the neighbor to the north, was seeking is that we would, in addition to reflecting it on the site plan, make it a condition of approval. We're in agreement with that. I don't think your staff is. We have a private agreement, so it's reflected in the graphic depiction. We're happy to make it a written textual condition of approval, if that's your decision, and we do have a separate agreement. And of course, what they're looking for is certainty that if you approve a generator on the south side, that someday in the future, we don't come back and say, now we'd want to move it under the windows and the sight line of Ocean House North. And we are completely agree with that. They have been great neighbors of ours historically, and they'll be great neighbors of ours going forward, and we're, of course, delighted to have their support. So, we're good either way.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we had the plan that was being approved.
Absolutely.
What your private agreement is, that's up to you guys, but the plan we're approving is showing what you all have, whatever your agreement or your.
And that is a correct statement. So what's depicted on the plan mirrors exactly with what you're looking at, and it mirrors exactly our private agreement, and if we wanted to belt and suspend it and make it COA, we're happy to do that as well. Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Your dad came to the club many times, too.
Yes.
Doing well, good man. I have a question for Simmons and White. Did you do the traffic engineering for this as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So do you have some showing of the site, SIGHT, very clearly you can tell, I've given enough hints about it, that coming out of that, because that egress has been changed. It's, you changed that from the existing ingress and egress, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And it's going across the street. Now it appears as though it's going to match up with the parking lot across the street, so that it's a direct.
Correct.
Okay. So, do you have any site visual that you can share with us as to, as to what it would appear to be at the stop of the property line, before you go onto A1A, and before you cross? Do you have any?
We have not prepared that specific site distance analysis, but we could certainly do that. Given the geometry, I have no reason to believe it'll be problematic, but we can do that.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I would like to see that, absolutely, because historically, that has been an issue there, for those that don't know that. The site leaving the Ocean Club is, that's, you know, or leaving that property, I should say, because that is the shared parking.
Right.
And because, especially now that you're matching it up with the driveway across the street, there's going to be propensity to dart across the street, and there's bicyclists and there's other things going on there that has, that has had, had accidents there. So now is a good time to change it, to reflect that, that situation that's there, right?
Okay.
Okay? I hope you understand.
And a question while you're up there.
Yep.
Piggyback, where it's, it's only, you can only leave the property currently, on the current, where it sits today, you're, you're talking about ingress and egress out of your new.
That is ingress, egress, yes.
Right, so we don't have that today, remember? We're, we only have, you can turn left, you know, north or south. You can't enter at that point.
But they probably had it when the other building was there.
No.
No.
Now, we always had to come through the Ocean Club.
Always had to come through the Ocean Club. So here now, you're going to have, just to piggyback on what you're saying, you're going to have ingress into the site as well through there, which we haven't had before, and I think, Ken, your comment is well taken, relative to that.
Okay. First it.
Thank you. Now that you've thrown it, we should be looking at this, this aspect. I think we're going to have to come back, so I need to do that for you. Conceptually, I mean, I have no objection to the plan. You know, I appreciate the reduction of density. Conceptually, it's good, the devil's in the detail. I do have some comments on the architecture, which is part of, I hate to say that, Mr. Spina, I'm sorry.
Please.
You were sat here through the first one, so you might as well hear this again, or through Mr. Stott. I have a little bit of a problem with it. Let me be blunt about it, maybe no one else does, and that's okay. It's not quite, I mean, it's a very nice plan, it's a very nice design, maybe for Delray, maybe for some other areas, it just doesn't meet what I think the town was hoping to have come about. And I can, I can share that honestly, because we have, we have had other big projects, Port Ophino, Ocean Harbor Estates, we've had other projects, and there was some architectural design put into, not to say that this doesn't have architectural design, but you can see the character's a little bit different. And then, this is always the hard part about this, is that, you know, I hate to, to, to talk about taste, but that is our job. And, you know, I, I just, I have a hard time with, with some of that. I could see this on Miami Beach, I could see this in some other areas, but I'm having a difficult time with it, and maybe no one else is, but for its location, understand that, not, not that it wouldn't be beautiful somewhere else, but, and I'm not talking about the structure, I'm talking about the design. So is there any way we can make that more in conformity with a small-town atmosphere with what we're trying to achieve here in Ocean Ridge, and compared with Alapan, with Gulfstream? This wouldn't, this would never fly in Gulfstream, I could tell you that much. I'd be shocked.
We wouldn't have tried in Gulfstream.
Right, thank you. Well, then you shouldn't try.
Yeah, but I think, you know, so, just to kind of explain it, yes, we can look at it, maybe we'll, I don't know, Brian, if we have that, we'll be sure. So, we came in early on, you know, 40 years ago, started talking about this, and, you know, I warn everybody, it's the West Palm Beach of a business here, you know, I need to worry about running into you guys at dinner, not having you, you know, yell nasty words across the table.
I don't know.
So, we studied architecture a number of different ways, you know? When someone said, well, what about the buildings close by? Well, the buildings close by, you know, I wouldn't want to follow that as an architectural directive. It is hard to find a building of this scale, and you mentioned a couple of, in Ocean Ridge, that you said would be a great example of the scale and quality of Ocean Ridge architecture other than single-family. So, but, but the sketch that you see on the screen is the exact same building. Nothing has changed, other than the aesthetic. And so, if you said, is that more in keeping with Ocean Ridge? I don't know. Mr. Khalil, what do you think? Is that more in keeping with the site? You said, I don't like this, what, is that?
Well, my fair old B, I mean, that's not.
But this is, this, the image you see on the screen.
But you, but you can tell there's a little bit more architectural features. There's a roof slope, there's, there's other things there that give it character.
And my point is that this is the same building that we're presenting today.
Okay.
And this is, if someone said, I don't like this very contemporary style.
It's a different skin.
It's a different skin.
Yeah.
And if you guys say, well, wow, that's really appropriate, you know, then we can pick apart the details later. But if this is the direction, there it is.
Okay.
This is the same building, we don't have to change.
More like 4, more like 4001 in Gulfstream.
Yeah. A question, you know, we, we, I feel you, and we debated long and hard about the architectural aesthetic here. Like, we're not modernists, and that's not our, you know, only style of architecture that we practice. So this is the exact same building, identical, and every aspect other than the skin on it is something that we think has more of a residential flavor, smaller scale, Ocean Ridge, Gulfstream.
So that's exactly what, in my view, that we should be trying to achieve for that, and, so that might be it, I don't know. You have to do your rendering.
That's it. That's a rendering of the same building.
Black and white chart, it's hard to see that, but.
Okay.
You can possibly bring that back.
If you guys.
Because they're going to bring back the site, they're going to have to come back anyway for the other things, so. I would, I mean, I would like to see something of that comparison, if you don't mind.
Is that reply to all?
By the way, there's version number two. We, we like version one, but this is the same exact building, different skin, different treatment.
Is this version one?
Yes. No.
Okay.
That's, that's the original design.
Okay.
You know, part of the design challenge, by the way, we worked with staff, this whole building height, which we think, you know, everybody has their own opinion, but we think the code, the way it's stated, didn't really address the building in the scale. We think it caused it to have a flat roof because of this exception, and later, Corey and his team helped us get around that with the screen wall. We had started with more of a Manser-type screen wall like this. We think it'd be a much better solution, and so.
I don't disagree with what you're saying.
But we, we like the previous version.
Who doesn't like that?
Building A, so we can go back one. And if you, you know, would say, hey, we think that's a lot more appropriate, we'll show you a full renderings of it next time we come back, of something like this. We, we like this version.
I, I would agree.
I'd like to see it.
I would agree, so.
I agree.
And the Manser is six feet, is that the way it works here?
Pardon?
And the Manser is a six-foot level.
We've used the Manser as the exact same capacity as we did the pair of the screen wall, and it doesn't need to be any taller than six feet.
So you would not need to put, at that point, your screening would be within.
Yeah, it's still in the six.
It would be in there.
Yeah.
Be a roof.
Yeah. The code, though, when we first started this.
I understand.
Like, nobody could figure out how to do it, and it, it led us, like, we started with this style of architecture at the beginning, you know, 40 years ago, two years ago, and then the code challenges were complicated, just because of the antiquated code. That's not a negative, it's just the facts, you know?
Understand, we've had it a week.
Yeah.
So you guys have been playing with it for a couple of years, but we've had it a week.
We, we appreciate your comments, we, you know, we did this before we.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming back with that. I think that would be, that would be great. That looks, actually, looks very nice. That looks, that actually looks very nice. You know, I might have some other comments, but that, that's, those are big for.
As we look through here, yeah. Gentlemen?
Yeah, I generally agree. I think in concept.
Neil?
I agree.
Okay, great. Well, I feel, listen, I, I, I drove yesterday from the Boca Inlet all the way to the Ocean Club to see what was on the road, what was on A1A. Drove A1A just specifically for this purpose, right? And, and I think Ken's comments are, you know, in certain areas, this building would be perfect. And I appreciate, I, I kind of like the style myself in a lot of ways, but I don't know if it's in keeping with your, and within our community. And I appreciate you having some, I had a feeling you were going to have some alternatives, and so you've got a couple of alternatives, and we should, we should look at that and understand that further. I think this has been a good, you know, bite at the apple. I think we should further understand what, what our role and responsibility is here. I asked that question to Christie earlier, so that we can, when you come back next time, we can sit down and go through further the architecture per se. I'm with the, with Ken as well, on the, on the access here. This is changing things, and, and listen, it's a tough, it's a tough site, just driving into the Ocean Club. You know, you're going up the hill like this, right away. And, and how this is all going to work, and appreciate that your engineer talking about that. And we'd like to hear further about that, how that's actually going to happen, right? So those are my comments. So if we have a motion to, Ken, would we have a motion?
Yeah, we understand that we, you know, I think there's a consensus here that conceptually we're going.
Moving in a good direction.
Moving in a good direction. So I'll do, move to continue this to the next meeting.
Yes.
To be placed on the first of the, on first, so that we can get you in and out of here and finalize and bring back, please, those things that we talked about. Okay? And if there's any other things missing, bring them, give them to us.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you again for all your time and your application today. So we say that, we're going to, we've got the seawall ordinance, we'll push that off to the next meeting or the following meeting after that.
You want to talk about a little bit, I mean, we're going to have comments from the other, but just briefly.
Why didn't we want to have the restrictions for Ocean House North on the?
He said they're already on.
But why did the town not want to have it incorporated?
Oh, the reason that I said they're separate from the town is because I don't want, from legal perspective, the town to have to enforce their private agreement. Now, to some extent, we might, because they're a part of the site plan, and so they don't stay in part of the site plan.
In fairness, since we closed this item, and since you're walking out, I don't, I bring it up at the next meeting, because I think that would be unfair to.
No, they, I have explained.
I'm still, I'm still new to this, Ken.
That's all right.
Some of us don't have the generational knowledge.
But, but again, getting back to, we had the gentleman coming in, we had item number five. Maybe we could put that beginning of the next meeting and just have them come in, give us, give us a brief discussion on that. We could talk about that, and then, and then knock that out, and then continue with the 6855 application.
I agree, Mr. Chairman.
Okay? Any comments? Commissioner comments?
No, I thought we made a lot of progress today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ken?
Good, no.
Thanks for being, thanks, Ken, for being here. Okay. Anyone down there?
Thanks, Ken, for being here.
Okay. We'll adjourn the meeting, and thank you, everyone.